Welcome to the special meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, June 2nd, and it's six o'clock. We are meeting virtually based on Governor Newsom's executive orders. And let's turn it over to Karen for roll call, please.
Councilmember Getzelt?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Councilmember Lintell? Vice Mayor Clark?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. So we have a quorum. And we're going to move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. You may comment for up to three minutes. And but if you have a comment on any other matter listed on the agenda, to do so when the matter is being considered is the appropriate time. So let's open it up for public comments. I see Kim Shirley.
Hello, Mayor Kerr and council. I just want to give a really big thank you to Chief Hoin for his message he put out on Nextdoor. There's a lot of people hurting right now. And so to hear him, you know, reach out to us, it was and to feel like we have that connection. It was super, super meaningful. I also want to give a big thanks to the other jurisdictions. Monterey Police was wonderful for the protest on Saturday. Seaside today was fabulous as well, and as well as Monterey. I mean, they were, I just felt supported. I felt like it was peaceful. I felt it was just a very nice connection. And so I just really want to thank our police force and those surrounding jurisdictions. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Ken Rutherford?
Yes, thank you also for the opportunity to speak. I actually raised my hand and just wanted to echo what Kim has just, without Chief Hoin's letter in Nextdoor. I just recently was very thankful that he sent that and really appreciated that. And appreciated also the law enforcement in this area and the support that I've seen from them during this really troubling time. It's good to know that we have police officers in our city that recognize what's going on and have spoken out, and I do appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Ken. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott Donaldson, Portola Drive. And I have a bit of good news during this very challenging and difficult time. You may have seen some flyers going around the neighborhood, but the Citizens Action Group has partnered with Safeway to provide free $50 Safeway gift cards to our residents. We don't want anyone to feel inhibited about getting a card, so there's no criteria other than the fact that you're a Delray Oaks resident and that you feel as though you have a need. It'll be, the cards will be distributed at the Portola Quendale Triangle on the 6th of June from 10:00 in the morning until noon. And it'll be a drive-by type style, so we can maintain the COVID-19 protocols. The Herald and the Weekly plan to write articles about the event will also post it on Nextdoor. And KION and KSBW are also interested. I'm not sure if they will in fact run a story, but they're very interested in it. And in addition to giving out the gift cards, we'll also be asking for donations because we're limited to 50 cards, and we would hope that we could increase that, maybe get it up to another 50 cards. So thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other, for those that just arrived, were still in public comment period? Do you have anything on just general comments? I see no hands, please. I see no hands, so we're going to move to, did somebody say something?
No, I just coughed.
Oh, okay. So we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to new business. A, consider the general plan annual progress report. We'll turn it over to a city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the annual progress report is an annual requirement to be submitted to the state. Denise Duffy is here with us tonight as our planning staff. Denise and her staff prepared the draft general plan APR, which went to the Planning Commission on May 13th. At that meeting, we received terrific input from the planning commissioners as well as the public. And I will summarize some of the highlights that we've, the changes we've made based on that input after Denise provides a brief overview of the general plan and this process. And then we'll both be ready to answer any questions you or the public might have. So I'd like to introduce Denise.
Thank you, Dino. With your permission, Mayor, I will attempt to share my screen. And we have a short PowerPoint presentation to do a bit of an overview on the annual progress report and the purpose. Let me try this.
I was a step ahead of myself. Could I ask everyone to mute themselves while she's giving the presentation just to help with any ambient noise? Sorry, Denise, it's all yours.
Okay. Can you see the screen then? Am I, did it work?
Let me try it, Denise, real quick. You want the PowerPoint?
Yeah, just the PowerPoint. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I don't know. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you see it? I can't see it, so.
I'm seeing it. You are, I'm, can the rest of, Mayor, can you see it? Okay, great.
We can see it.
Thank you. So.
Let me know when you want me to change slides.
Okay. So there's a, there's a requirement under OPR, Office of Planning and Research, and to have an annual review of the general plan policies. And the purpose, we're going to talk tonight about the purpose of that, what our annual report says, the last time we did this, and just open it up for any questions or discussions. The whole point is to have input as much as possible. The requirement is a middle of an annual report, normally by April 1st of every year, but because of the COVID-19, they are extending any deadlines, et cetera. And the city in the past has been somewhat good about submittal. We did a full, complete review over a year period of time in 2016, 2017. Typically, you want to do that once every five years. So next slide.
There we go.
Okay. So there, the requirement is really to really help the cities to allow the city council in this case to assess how the general plan is being implemented, to see where you are, and provide enough information to see if there are needs to be any specific course adjustments or modifications as a means to improve how you are implementing the general plan. It is supposed to provide correlation between the land use decisions that you're making as a city council and as a city since the last reporting period, usually over an annual period, and how, and measuring how the goals are being implemented. In this case, there's very few land use decisions of any major sort in terms of projects, et cetera, because it's such a small city. But it also provides information, specifically in terms of how our city is meeting the share of its regional housing needs and removing governmental constraints to the development of housing. There's a dual set of reports. There's a report that's due to HCD, Housing and Community Development, on April 1st of every year, which we submitted an April 1st HCD report. And in this case, because the housing element was adopted in December 2019, there was not much to report into my way of progress between that date and April 1st, when we submitted that to HCD. Next slide. Typically, the contents of a general plan are vision-oriented, driven, the overview is the goals, vision, policies, and the objectives of what you want to accomplish, and then implementing programs. And the level of detail in each element reflects the need of each community. So we, in our case, next slide, the city has, has a history of general plan, but it is a long history. The city has had a desire to update its general plan for some time. However, there has been constraints to do that. And the interesting element of, you know, where our plan is, is that we have a plan that was the city proper. And then in the 1990s, a former Ford Orde property had a full general plan update with all the policies, implementing policies of the Ford or reuse plan, which was adopted. So our current general plan is a combination of really the much older policies and the pretty old policies of the 1997 former Ford Orde. Therefore, when we did the comprehensive review of all the general plan policies with the Planning Commission and then also with the city council back in 2016, 2017, we went through on a Planning Commission, our Planning Commission meeting hearing basis. And we went and took the land use plan for one meeting and went through, looked at all the land use plan policies. We did that with the circulation element. We did that with housing element policies and each of the policies of the general plan elements. We were rather pleased, actually, at the end of the day, when we were able to report to the city council, the Planning Commission recommended the staff report and recommended the approval of the implementation of the annual report, that there has actually been some endorsement of some of these policies that have been around for quite some time as being reflective of the vision and the feelings of the city of Delray Oaks in terms of how. And of course, the, the goal has always been from the city to adopt and update its housing element, which I know was the visioning plans for the last three years. The housing element was adopted in December 2019. So that is generally a quick review of our history of general planning. I think the only other thing to add is that I think in almost every visioning report that I've seen since Dino's been involved and maybe before, the city has identified a need to do a comprehensive general plan update and a desire to do so at some time in the future, in the next three years. Next slide. So after the, what you have in your staff report is the, is a, is a approval of the, you know, is basically the annual planning report and review. After, normally when cities adopt general plans, then there are requirements for review and reporting. So that's what we're under right now. The staff report that you have before you and the, and the large chart is, is specific to the requirements, which are very loose, of Planning Commission review and reporting to city council on implementation of general plans. Then this council considers and then normally adopts a resolution on the report progress and provides this to OPR. In this case, what we did is we followed the process and the approach from the 2016, 2017 annual progress report. We had a number of policies and programs, and we listed each policy and program within the general plan. We went through, as we did before, with the, with the Planning Commission input, and then we just basically updated that through DDNA staff in terms of what's been done, and then presented that to the city, Dino and his team. And then Dino presented that to the Planning Commission on May 13th. So that's the, the process whereby we, we took the previous general plan annual report and updated that. And I'm happy to report also that, as Dino mentioned, there are a number of comments at the Planning Commission, a lot of input, really good input. And so then that was further refined and expanded. So there was more specific update in terms of how each of the policies have been or have not been implemented of the general plan. Next slide. So I think that's, at this point, a good time to hand this over to Dino to review the general plan policies and what the Planning Commission had to say. The next steps on this would be discussion or questions. And I think because of the resolution that would be needed, there is not a plan to actually approve this tonight. What you'd be doing is when you're ready to do that, you do that through resolution, and you're basically saying, we accept this to send to Office of Planning and Research for the requirements of the general plan and review. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Dino?
Thanks, Denise. Thank you, Mayor. So as Denise mentioned, we took a lot of good comment on the 13th. There were about 16 of the policies that we've modified, and I'm going to walk quickly through the matrix and highlight that some of the changes based on the input. Start in order, starting with L4, Policy L4, which says that city shall work with the airport district to ensure the airport district will not compete with the city's market for future development. We modified this to say the city communicates with the airport district regarding development plans and provides comment during environmental review to ensure that they do not conflict with the city's planned future development. On Policy L15, which states that the city shall facilitate community input and feedback in various modes, including the Acorn, we spelled out that the community input is encouraged and public participation plays a major role in the city's projects, including the city's housing element update and short-term rental ordinance update. For Policy 16, L16, the city should encourage volunteer participation for their residents. We added that the city encourages volunteer participation in programs such as the Citizens Action Group, Sustainable Delray Oaks, various mayor's advisory committees, and through efforts such as Adopt an Island, where volunteers beautify public open space. Moving to Policy C4, which discusses circulation and talks about the widening or other actions along 218, we simply added General Jim Moore in parentheses next to North-South Road, which is the old name of the road and is confusing to anyone not familiar with it. Same with Policy C8, we added General Jim Moore there with North-South, North-South Road. On Policy C10 Bravo, we highlighted that on the South Boundary Road project, we're working with TAMC and the City of Monterey and FORA on a separate mixed-use path along South Boundary Road and potential roundabout at the intersection of General Jim Moore Boulevard. On C11, we added General Jim Moore by North-South Road. And then discussed the Fortag project through the city, which is funded for a portion of the trail through Delray Oaks and Seaside, and that it will create a raised bike path along Carlton Drive, and that the South Boundary Road project will also include a mixed-use separated path from General Jim Moore to Rancho Sacita Road. Policy C17, which discusses the city will not support the potential northside access road from Highway 218 and Delray Garden Drive or any airport access road through the city. We added language that says the city submitted written comment during the airport district's master plan EIR opposing a northside access road through the city in 2018, and the airport changed its plan to propose access through an existing road in Monterey to its northside. On Policy S2, which discusses sewer and water lines, we added that we are working with Seaside County Sanitation District, or Seaside County Sanitation District has worked to improve the lift station at Rosita and Angeles. Policy 6A, S6A, we added that, and this will be added, it's not in your packet, but we called it post-publication, that we've added catch basins and drainage as part of the street improvement projects throughout the city. S7, we added that the city has identified water and sewer lines required along South Boundary Road. S8, we've added that MCWD does so on our Ford Orde property to add to the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District handling the water in the rest of the city. Parks and Recreation for PS1, we modified the language, previous language, which was vague and misleading, to say that there has not been a park master plan developed due to lack of budget. Policy C/OS4, we corrected a mistake where it said Monterey County to read, to reflect correctly Monterey Regional Parks District. COS5C, similarly, replaced Monterey County with Monterey Regional Parks District. Moving to the noise element, Policy N1, we answered a question about runway 6-24, which has been closed for some time by the airport. Policy N2, we looked into questions regarding the noise monitoring system and determined that the, the airport has done a, a study published in 2007 regarding noise studies and attenuation measures. I'm happy to answer any questions more about that. And then Policy N6, finally, we modified the justification and finding to more correctly reflect what's happening, and that is that the city works with the airport at the elected staff and citizen levels to ensure noise attenuation measures are met. And that concludes the, the changes made. With that, I think Denise and I are happy to answer council and public's questions regarding the APR. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for walking us through that. So let's start with Vice Mayor Clark. Let's unmute you.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought this is very good, very thorough, well-thought-out, lots of good changes. I'm really happy, you know, I really want to emphasize, you know, keeping our city a walkable city. And I, I asked Dino earlier, you know, I'm going to throw this out, but I'd like to somehow see the, the stone house that Tarpey has to become like a historical building so it can be more, more permanent. I think that's it. I think it's, it's very good and very thorough and very happy with it. Thank you, Planning Commission, and all the residents that had input on it.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
Yes. Dino answered many of my questions that I had had regarding the airport and noise and, and the runway being closed. I do have questions or comments on page 2L8. I think this should be considered, and, and I hope the city, the Planning Commission takes this into consideration too, if Mr. Maury presents a, or submits an expansion request, because the view from the city, from the highway, I think is very important for our city. And so I do hope the Planning Commission takes that into consideration also. And then L16, I feel it shouldn't be like, like it has programs such as Citizens Action Groups, Sustainable Delray Oaks, and various mayor's advisory committees. I, I feel that these shouldn't be the mayor's advisory committees. These should be a city, not just the people who are following the mayor's. It's kind of dividing the city when we specify the mayor's advisory committees. And I would like to see that changed and to be a, a reference to the city volunteer groups and, and progress in that area, which I think is very important. And thank you all for all the hard work you've accomplished, and thanks, Denise, for being here with us tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Louise?
Yes. One, I don't know, it would, about three issues. One, C11, under the policy summary, it says requested Ford Orde annexation area, and that's been annexed for many years. So I don't know if that's a way to either correct it on the policy or make a note over on the justification for the findings, that we have annexed that area. It is ours now. Secondly, I have some personal concerns under S5.
Can you tell us what page that is?
Okay. Page 6.
Okay, thank you.
Page 6, S5, that some houses within the city are still on septic. And I understand, I talked to Dino earlier, and I understand that those are grandfathered, and those are homes that were actually built before we became a city. But based on what I think is the location, it would be an optimal time to maybe look into potentially connecting them to city sewer, potentially as we do the infrastructure for South Boundary Road, to extend that, to cover these homes also. I just, I just have a thing about, you know, septic systems function well if you maintain them well. Unfortunately, they take a lot of maintenance, and, and I really would like to see all the homes in the city under a septic system, or not on a septic system, sorry, on, on city municipal, because it's not our sewer system, it's, it's Seaside Sanitation, but under a municipal sewer system rather than individual septic systems or an area septic system. And the third thing is, I didn't really see, I am concerned about the lack of walkability from Jim Moore Boulevard, I guess it's east to the shopping center. I know it was addressed when, when TAMC did their study, but I don't see it, you know, really addressed in our general plan, whether we somehow get access through one of those storage, that storage area that it's the end. So when I walk down the end of Canyon Del Oaks, I walk down to that east end, to the gate, to the storage area, I can see through their driveway into Tarpey's parking lot. It would be nice if somehow or other we could get some type of access, some type of agreement with the owners there that would allow some type of walkability, because, I mean, right now, walking 218 is not too bad, but when we go back to normal business, 218 is a hazard to walk. It's a hazard for bicycles, it's a hazard to walk. We could have at least that much, if not more, walkability from Jim Moore Boulevard, actually almost from the Frog Pond all the way down to the shopping center. I would really like to see that somehow included in, in our, in our goals. That's all I have.
Okay. John? You're muted. Or, yeah. There you go.
You know, here, here on that, on Louise's comment, and that's something, I mean, the first time I ever met the mayor, we talked about that. You know, just not, not to derail this conversation, but is that something that we could, we could pick up and go do? I mean, it seems like such an easy thing. It's two gates, like, I don't know why, it, it looks like it was at one time of our road, and you somehow let that happen. So we, I guess we don't, we don't have a popular idea, but I would love to pick that up as a topic of conversation. I think because we've all thought about that. On C7, I want to know what we mean by support, actually, let me pull it up here. The city does not support any realignment on 68. Does that include roundabouts? Is that, is that our, what's our spirit there? Yeah.
So through the mayor, the, these policies, C7, were done at a time when not everyone was here, even I wasn't, I don't think I was here for this. So I'm not so sure what that intent of that policy was, Highway 68, which will, you know, I think with that, at that point, at that time, whether, when there was no Stone Creek, quite frankly, that I think they didn't want to realign Highway 68 and, and Canyon Del Ray in such a way that they would have taken away property within that area where Stone Creek is now. So it is one of those policies that, you know, may not be completely applicable anymore. And.
Are we, are we at all editing out and deleting policies that don't, that aren't sufficient or they don't meet our needs anymore?
So the, this is not a general plan amendment process, that, or a general plan update. But that's certainly, I'm taking notes, I know Dino and Karen are too, in terms of the things that we've heard before in terms of your visioning, in terms of walkability, things like that, that aren't.
Yeah.
And that are, that are in your vision plans that we hear a lot and aren't in your general plan, quite frankly. Those things need to be considered with, along with public input into the process when the general plan update does occur. There are also some elements that you, depending upon what the process is for, that you may want to clean up in a general plan. want to clean up in a general plan. And, and I think that's really at the, at a core decision with the council. And, you know, going through these planning policies so specifically, so that everyone really understands and hears them, reads them, and sees where we are and where not, is so helpful from the Planning Commission side to hear as a planner and to hear the council. So, I mean, it's a great exercise, it's really helpful to learn. There's just a difference between this report, which is reporting on how we've done and implementing our policies. That's exactly what it is, and in terms of, well, what do we want to change? And that's exactly, you know, as we started out with, you assess how the general plan's being implemented and see what, you know, kind of adjustments, course adjustments you want to make in terms of, of their policies.
Okay, so then what I would request is, on all my things, then if we would just, again, just add that to that note, so that, that gets refreshed the next time we're gonna do our amendment.
Okay.
All right, so then moving to, and then what do we, what is the spirit of support? What does it mean when the city supports or doesn't support? What does that language mean?
To me, to the, the support normally means that you, as a council, have a position, the city has a position of supporting a specific policy program or, or item, or not supporting it. You know, example would be, don't support access from the airport road is something that's been in the general plan for a long time, versus supporting, as an example, of walkability or, you know, et cetera. So that's a, it's really a policy directive. And then, you know, just everything from, you know, everything comes from the general plan. So you have the policies and then normally you'd, you'd have it implementing programs and, you know, just like anything else, just like the Housing Element had, here's what we're gonna accomplish by when, so.
If it's in the general plan and it's supported or not supported, what does that do to say for a developer who comes there? If they are proposing to do something that is in our general plan that we do not support, what happens to them? How do we address that?
I think it has to be specific to, it's kind of too generic to answer. A developer or somebody who comes in with an application to consider, you know, they'd have to be looking at your general plan policies and, and your zoning and your land use designations and see, you know, what's available, what's not, and how, how they can fit within or, or request amendments. A developer or anyone is allowed to come in and ask for a general plan amendment if there's a policy that is not to their liking, and then that, of course, has to go through public review, secret determination, and approval or disapproval at the council level.
All right. So moving down to the open space, CS, CSO, Charlie Oscar Sierra zero five, which would be on a five A, which is on eight. So it says the city is committed to maintaining, no, I'm sorry, the former four-door annexed a large portion of land to the city, much of this land has been preserved as open space. What is the spirit of that right there? What does that mean?
So you're on COS five A, like, directly, okay, I'm working off my little phone.
Yeah.
These are, what the, this column attempts to do, it's, it's called, I mean, it's maybe the wrong name to call it a finding, it's basically, what have you done to implement or not implement this specific policy? Where is the status of it? So it's basically that.
Denise, let me, let me jump in here, if I may. John, I've, I've read that and it's been bugging me, and for some reason I didn't modify it. What I, what I would suggest we do is change the word "much" to "some," because it is, it is true that the, the parcel south of South Boundary Road that was donated to, or that was transferred to the city, has been transferred to the Regional Parks District and set aside for open space. It's also true that we have set aside a certain amount to the California Native Plant Society. So those are, those are knowns, and so I'm, I'm more comfortable with some than much. And in my mind, I thought about, I mean, certainly any future development is going to develop only a fraction of the total 240 acres on the north side of South Boundary Road, but that's not a known, and we haven't made any decisions and we don't want to prejudge that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Denise.
I may too, I mean, I just think the wording is, is off, as Dino pointed out, it's, it's meant to say that there has, you know, currently, this, this land is an open space, but it isn't a policy statement per se, it's basically trying to present a status quo, and I think the language is not fully, is poorly written, that's all.
If I read it, that could be misconstrued, that, that could be, I mean, the first time I read that, I thought, well, sure, I mean, of the 28,000 acres, 23,000 of it is open space. So, yeah, a majority of the four-door property is, but what's annexed to us is not part of that 23,000 acres that's dedicated to open space. So, that's the way I initially read that. But that could be misconstrued, that right there, as I read it, that could, that could say, well, the properties that the army annexed to you is preserved as open space, that's not true.
Correct. I think we can figure out a way to fix that language.
Can you simply just add the two parcels, the CMPS and the, the Regional Parks parcel?
Sure.
List that and say, you know, that way it's, it's more of an identifier than broad?
Yes.
That's a good recommendation.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
That's totally good, I'm happy with it.
I have a comment on that, too. I would also say that due to the geography and historical use of the area, there are limits to how much development can happen there, something along that line. So there are constraints that will encourage or result in open space simply because of the residuals from private, from prior use and just the basic geography that it's just hard to build on some of those areas. Thank you.
Okay. And then, I've one, my, my last, I have two more, my last one is November one, and again, I guess it just kind of goes with support. I definitely understand what our issues are with, you know, the, just, just the frequency, you know, that the planes are taking off and the sensitivity to the noise and everything. I guess my one, my one statement to that is that, again, we are strongly supporting and shall give support to, I guess, efforts that will, the maintenance of restrictions on nighttime flights, the use of approaches in departure flights, the, I mean, anything to do with the operations of the airport, that is not something that we, as a, as a local jurisdiction and as the airport, as a special district, has any control over, that's at the federal level. And, and I don't know what our support there is, or what our support, you know, provides, I don't, I don't know what, what gain we get out of that. Do you know, do you want to?
I'll take a swing at that. I mean, John, it puts us on the record as having a council-approved community position regarding, in this case, various causes of noise. I, I don't dispute with you for a second, our ability to, to alter FAA regulations or, or anything like that, but, you know, the way that I've watched our general plan policies play on the road, for example,
Exactly.
is, is it tied directly to our comment on an environmental document that caused a course of action to become inviolable, I mean, un-
Inviable.
Inviable, thank you. And, and that's, that's real, that's powerful, and it caused a change. So, who knows when this will come to, to play? But I think it's, it's certainly helpful to staff to have formalized community positions on, on the issues.
I get that, and we have every, every right in our purview, or it's, it's totally within our purview to, to support and not support land use decisions within that special district, but operations, we don't have any control of, nor do they, they don't have any control on that. And that's, that's why I think we have a lot of consternation, is that we, we go to the special district and say, we want you to do this, and they, they throw their hands up and say, we can't do that, and that's, that's out of our purview, and we have it in here, where, you know, I think we've got kind of a mismatching of support. We, we, while we may support the restrictions of nighttime flights, we can't do anything about that unless we lobby, you know, and have changes done at the federal level. So I guess, I don't know, I don't know what we gain by having that part in here.
Well, from the policy standpoint, it's, it's in your general plan and has been for decades, so, but what, what we are doing now is also identifying how we are or are not implementing and which policies update would need to be amended, or whose stated these policies should be amended. So, I think it's, the statement that you're making is it, it's, it's part of a process whereby you're actually starting consideration of a general plan update.
Okay. All right, and then the, that's actually it, that's actually it that I have on these comments, and then, thank you. I remembered how much we went, when we did this at Planning Commission back in 2016, I remembered how fun it was back then, so, thank you.
Great. And I also want to reiterate, thanks for doing this. I'm glad we're having this conversation. I have quite a few more kind of clarification, sometimes the document appears like it was the 2017 and verbiage wasn't quite changed to reflect today, and I'm not talking about the policies, I'm talking about the justifications. The first thing is, can you please explain the use of the word "complete" in the implementation status? It's, I mean, the majority of them say "complete," and I think there's some that are actually complete, and there are many, many more that are implemented regularly, or?
I think, if I could answer, I think that the wording is a little bit off with using the word "complete," and I think that you've really put something forward which makes some sense, I think it's really have, have these been, have these policies been implemented? And if it's not applicable anymore, we can do that on a case-by-case basis, because there's so many of those. So I would just say we delete the, the word "complete" on that implementation status.
Thank you, thank you, because, you know, some of them make total sense, you know, if there's a, you know, the north-south Boundary Road or something, right? It was done, it was complete, but there's a lot of these things that seem to me to be ongoing all the time. So thank you for that. The other thing is, is there's a lot of mention that the Planning Commission takes these factors into consideration. Is that a reference to the municipal code? What I would really love to see is a checklist or something, because there's things that feel far more current than I'm guessing much of our municipal code is, like, you know, one of the items says that the Planning Commission promotes multimodal transportation options, right? That seems to me to be verbiage, recent verbiage. And so I, ultimately, I want to know, is there a document that someone at HCD or whoever wants to look at it and see what indeed the Planning Commission does consider?
No, no. No, they're, they really are at a high level, this is actually a very detailed annual progress report, because you don't need to go into this much detail, but I, I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, what it says the Planning Commission. This document originally did come from the Planning Commission, and what we heard during the Planning Commission and the, and the number of different meetings that we had is, oh, if I'm looking at that, that's what the Planning Commission considers when they look at a development. And so that's when you, you see those items, it's reiterating what was stated, because the Planning Commission is the first level of review for land use decisions, et cetera. And so what, when, what they spoke about, and John may recall this, is, well, this is what we do, this is what our charge is at the time when we look at these, and then we bring that up to the council.
Okay, I just have, I think Denise is on the call, you know, a brand-new Planning Commissioner, right? If she's reading this, it's like, where does she find, you know, the information that's relevant to that? That's what prompted my mind.
I think it's generic, so apologize if it's too, too specific like that, and we can take a look at those and try and make that language be current or specific.
I think we're all, you know, learning this new document and its functions and its roles and what we can and change and we can't, so it's all good. L thirteen says we're working on an ordinanceing, is that true?
L thirteen?
Yeah. And I'm, I was just wondering if that was, sorry, I don't have a page number.
Yeah, the, the city did work on and had an ordinance setting standards for the RV, I don't know if you remember that, the last, within last three years of recreational vehicles and parking limitations.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe I've been here so long that I can't, it was more than three years ago.
It was more.
It was, it was when I was on the Planning Commission, which was fourteen, fifteen, so.
Okay.
So do we?
That's an update.
It's all good, but do we need that in for this update?
No, I mean, this is really, you know, that's why this is before you to see and who else wants to make changes, but it's about how have we implemented that policy of, you know, so in some ways, we're trying to find elements of, yeah, well, gosh, we've done this.
Got it, got it.
In that case, which is, I can't find it again, but it was L-
It's page two, L thirteen.
L thirteen, I'm working on my little phone for this chart, so sorry about this.
You know, Denise, a more appropriate update for that is probably that we've, we've moved the RV storage lot and expanded it up on the airport and have priority to residents or RV storage.
So I think that's a good catch, and if the city are, our notes will make that update change.
Great. Um, let me think, C two and C three, update, or the LOS E to LOS D, or vice versa? C two, sorry, let me find it, I just-
Page three.
Thank you. Yeah, I think in the justification, it says we're gonna go to, both of them to LOS D based on the TMC qualifications, and the very last sentence for the justification lists LOS standards, but TMC has adopted and supports an LOS D standard. Does that mean intersection number one, Highway 218 at Highway 68 would then be LOS D, not E?
I think that's what that means, this, the policy is somewhat old and, but the standard that TMC is using is more in line with that, but let me check that, and we can-
Also, I believe we're using vehicle miles traveled now and not level of service, so we need to translate levels of service or explain that we've changed the standard?
Well-
The measurement, how it's measured?
I'm sorry, from a sequence down point, the consideration is VMT versus LOS, and so we can footnote that, but the policy's still, this is a clear indicator that when you have a list at the end of this, which is what we're doing, we have another column that says really needs to be updated or revised or deleted, this is one of those policies that clearly is outdated.
Thank you.
So now, S dash six A, which is on page six. There's just some terms I have never heard, and I'm guessing they're from far, far back. One is the Office Part Parcel. The second line, created by development of the Office Part OP Parcel into the ephemeral drainage in the natural area expansion, NAE Parcel. Which parcels are those?
So the, the policy S six A is in reference, I think, to the Office Park. So the, the policy S-6A is in reference, I think, to the Office Park, P-A-R-K. I'll fix that, Parcel.
Okay.
Of the former four-door, and I can't remember which number that is. And then...
I don't see any reference to the former four-door.
These are policies within the general plan, and in 1998, the policies from the former four-door area got implemented for this. So it doesn't specifically say that it's a policy from the former four-door, because currently, it's within your city. It doesn't have to identify it. But at any rate, I, I can't defend the language in here, I didn't write it, but it's a policy. But it does talk about Polygon 31B, which is a reference from 1997, 98, from the Fora reuse plan, so that's how I can tell.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, this is essentially saying, you know, it's trying to be protective of drainages and, and into the natural ephemeral areas. And so, the policy hasn't had an issue, it hasn't really been implemented, but there's been no development. So it's definitely a policy that needs to be updated because it's confusing.
Yeah, yeah. Seven, urban, for capital improvements. So, the other thing is, is there's obviously a lot of additions because of the, the former four-door property. So for example, S-7, on page seven, the justification says urban services are provided adequately. The Fora Capital Improvement Plan identifies public infrastructure as blah, 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 blah. Fora's going away in a couple of weeks, so what happens after that?
Well, we have to update this, this implementing actions. The policy doesn't get updated, because the policy is clear, identify public infrastructure needs. So this is a holdover from the 2017 that didn't get updated.
Denise, if I may, Mayor, that's one of the ones I highlighted, where we're going to change the justification language to reflect the city has identified water and sewer lines needed along South Boundary Road.
S-7?
Yes.
Okay, great. And while we're talking about general plan at large, I have a, it gives me the willies when it's called a drainage system. It is the Arroyo del Rey Creek. So I would just love to change that verbiage as we, whenever we move forward. Unless there's a drainage system that I'm not aware of that is close to the creek.
I think that's a good comment to put in the sort of footnotes, so that we don't lose and, and we can capture these.
Okay.
Because it's really, you know, it's basically, like I said before, we're almost starting to work on what doesn't. And there may be a sort of a phase-one update or something that the city wants to consider. It's a cleanup.
So similarly, like COS-5B, page eight, halfway down, the city shall use open spaces as a buffer between various types of land use. The justification talks about the airport using land use, but it doesn't talk about the city itself using buffers anywhere.
I think what the justification is, says as an example.
Okay.
So I don't think it's specific to just the airport.
Okay.
I think we're getting into a lot of good detail for us, but I, and I want to make sure we correct this. It's a spot in time, so that when we have it, that we do this again, we'll be able to more readily update and, and likely probably have a little bit more time to do so. So if there's anything that comes, you know, up between now and the next meeting, we can also consider that, you know.
Okay.
To, but so, a good point to just make, clarify that it's not necessarily just the airport. COS.
Work Memorial Park. COS-5D, open space, land spaces. It talks about the RV park, 17 acres. I'd also like added in there the Work Memorial Park that was donated to us for, I don't know if it's technically open space right now, but that should be added. I only have a few more. So COS-7, maintain a green belt along the Canyon del Rey Drainage Way. It just talks about the Frog Pond, whereas the creek goes through the entire city. So I don't know if there's something additional that can be added there.
I think it's specific to the Regional Park District property, the policy. So I think that's why it identifies that Frog Pond. I don't know if there's more property Regional Park District has beyond that.
They do.
Not along the drainage.
Right, right. But the, the policy summary says maintain the green belt along the entire drainage way. So that it's, I just want to delineate between what the city is doing and what other entities are doing, right? And so, while we can say the Regional Parks Districts are doing this as part of the city, I also just want to be conscious of what we're doing to address the entire policy.
That makes sense. I understand you now. Thanks. And we can add something about that.
I'm not going to worry about that. See, so nine. We talk about siltation and channel erosion and things like that due to urban development and upland, but really, upland for us is airport. Right? Can, and it talks about from urban development and upland. I mean, I don't know if that was coming from a four-door perspective, you know, coming down onto the Frog Pond.
All of that is certainly upland for us.
But we also have, the airport is also upland.
True.
So... And I just have a question on N-2. The airport provides means of evaluating the effectiveness of noise abatement strategies. Have we seen anything? Do we, have we ever received anything from the airport about their testing, the measuring, and the effectiveness?
So Denise found a report today while we were discussing this that is, I believe, dated 2007. That's a product of the Regional Airport District that conducted some noise monitoring, and then did some projections and articulated some attenuation and mitigation strategies. So there's certainly been something done over, over time. There have not been any studies done, I think, certainly in the last year.
And ultimately, I'm done with my, my specific questions. Ultimately, we do this annually, and are we, are the best practices to focus on the past year or the cumulative efforts?
The requirement says focus on what has been done in the past, but cumulative often kind of comes into that, because your actions aren't necessarily, you know, from a calendar year.
Sure, sure. Great, thank you. So let's go out to the public. Does anyone in the public have any questions on the general plan progress report? I'm not seeing any hands. Kim? Kim, please.
Hi. I want to thank Dino for being a good listener. So at the last planning commission, I felt like we threw a lot out at you, and I feel like I really see the changes being made, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. I do have one question on COS-5D on page eight. We've gone over that. But that sentence that says, also, there is a vacant 17 acres in city that they are conserving as open space. It's not zoned for open space, so do we need to specify that? That we're, I don't know, it seems sort of nebulous, since it's not really officially zoned as, as open space.
Denise, what do you think? I mean, it's, it's a...
An answer that, I think it needs to be corrected and updated, so that it's more specific to the, to the actual zoning and what's occurring.
Okay.
It's a good point, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. Dennis?
Yes, thank you. You can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay. I want to trumpet Louise and John's acceptance of my idea of the Beer Garden. I, I, I say that a little bit facetiously, because what I'm talking about is the walkability. That was one of the things that always mystified me. We want to try and create a channel that is totally safe, where you can walk from one end of Del Rey Oaks to the other. And with regard to the former Ford Org property, I, when I was on the council, I talked a lot about, a number of times, about trying to make sure that any development over there, make sure that we integrate that with the city, so that we don't feel like it's a, a separate entity and that we have easy communication or ability to get from one part of the city to the other by walking, riding a bicycle, or whatever needs of transportation we choose. So thank you very much, both Louise and John, for bringing up the access to Stone Creek and the Tarpeas. That's really, really important. It is extremely unsafe to be walking along Canyon del Rey. So, thank you. I'll lower my hand, or you already did.
I already did. Any other public comments on the general plan progress? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Coming back to the council, yes, Kristen?
Well, I do want, since, since you're taking notes for a general plan update, I would like to include making where the storage areas are in downtown Del Rey Oaks.
Kristen, I missed that last part.
Making where the storage area in downtown Del Rey Oaks.
Storage area, okay. Any other questions, comments, Kristen? I got you, Louise. Okay, Louise?
Yeah, I agree with Kristen, the, the storage area, I'm assuming you're meaning down by the Calle del Oaks.
Calle.
Right, because that's, that's, that, part of that...
Yeah, where all the storage units are, the, the south end of Calle del Oaks. I definitely agree that that would be great if we could make it into a downtown, especially if we could make it into a downtown mixed-use with commercial on the first, on the ground floor and apartments, living spaces upstairs. It's a great use of, of dual-use, and, and we're building in, rather than spreading out, we're building up a little bit, not, you know, I don't want to see skyscraper down there, but, you know, a two-story, potentially three-story building, especially up against the hillside, where you're not blocking anybody else's view shed. I think it'd be a great use for that area. And so, I'm, you know, want to go with that. And the other comment I had was, back to page eight, COS-5D. If we're going to talk about the vacant 17 acres, similarly to our big four-door parcel, only a portion of those 17 acres are buildable, because there's quite a bit of, I think about, at least half of it is wetlands and not suitable for building, and a portion of it is also so steep that it's not suitable for building. So we have a lot of open space. I mean, it'd be, I'm for keeping it all open space, but we need to note that we have these areas that, from, from nature, have made it into open space that's not practical to build on. Thank you.
Thanks. Pat, any last-minute comments, questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, John? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve...
Is there, is there any action that's needed on this, or just received?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
So you have two options tonight. We are, we are, we have to come back to you on June 23rd with a resolution, which we don't have in the packet tonight. So, and this is my recommended course faction, is to defer action tonight. Staff has taken all of the, the comments. We'll bring back to you on the 23rd a revised matrix with a reso-attached recommending adoption, which you can take action on, on June 23rd. Or if you like, you could approve the, well, I don't even recommend that. That's, that's my recommendation. Denise?
Thank you. Well, and I, just a, maybe a slight deviation of that would be approval of, to submit the APR report upon, let's see, that you reviewed and are, with changes, would like to submit the APR report with the knowledge that maybe Alex needs to have on this.
If it has to come back to us...
Resolution, yeah. You have to do a resolution.
If it has to come back to us, it makes sense that we vote on it all at one time, when we can see it all edited and clean.
I'll mute myself.
No, 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 it's all good. So then there's no further action?
Perfect.
Got it, okay. Louise, did you have something to say, or?
No, I was just going to make a motion to table this until the meeting at the end of the month, when we can have our recommendations incorporated and a clean copy to review.
You got it. Okay, so we're going to move on to new business B, resolution to approve green waste recovery rate schedule for 2021. Let's turn it over to Dino.
Thank you, Mayor. So the action before you tonight is to take action on a resolution to approve green waste recoveries rate schedule for 2020, 2021, which will represent a 2.4% increase to our rates in Del Rey Oaks. Dave Hilton is here to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to him, or turn it back to the mayor briefly, and he can answer any questions. By way of a little bit of context, since green waste recovery came on board some five years ago, the city's rates have increased significantly year-on-year. And last year, several jurisdictions triggered a clause in the agreement that, that allows for and requires, when asked for, a cost-based readjustment. In other words, an analysis of all costs and an analysis of the rates being charged to see if they're in line. Mr. Hilton's firm is retained by the Regional Waste Management District and conducted that analysis. It took quite some time to tease out the data necessary to do that study from green waste. At the conclusion of that, they had rates recommended for the jurisdictions, and our rate for this previous year didn't change. So this last year, our residents and businesses have seen no rate change whatsoever during the cost-based recovery. We had an eye on that, because if, if, if it was the case, and it did not turn out to be the case, that we should have been refunded, that our rates should have gone down, then we were going to pursue action against green waste to recover our residents and businesses' costs paid over. That didn't happen. So we had a flat rate for the year, and now the analysis for this coming year is 2.4%. My understanding is that cost-based readjustment has, has determined that some jurisdictions around us are seeing their rates increase quite a bit. And Dave may be able to speak to that specifically, but fortunately, ours are right around CPI or 2.4%. So that's where we are, and Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thanks. Dave, would you like to say anything before we launch into questions? Dave, would you like to say anything before we launch into questions? You're muted. Are you with us?
I'm muted. He's muted.
Right, let me see.
Can you hear me there?
Yeah.
All right, great. I think Dino covered that pretty well. I'm happy if you guys have any questions about the details of the process or the methodology that was involved to answer those for you. But again, Dino, thank you. That was a pretty good summation.
Great. So let's start with Kristen. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I was just wondering how this is going to affect commercial. Are the same percentage going up?
That is correct. It will be the same percentage applied to all commercial class, or all customer classes, rather.
Okay, so there's nothing hidden that's going to make the commercials jump up really high?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. There was an issue before, and so I was just going back to an issue from a few years ago. Yeah.
Pat? Kristen asked my question, so thank you.
Okay, Louise?
No, no questions. Being here at the homeowners association, we're in a little bit of different situation than most, well, than all the private homes. And we're not really a commercial, but we kind of are, and it's awkward for us at the HOA. So it's good news for our budget also. And then appreciate all the work that was done to make sure that people are staying honest. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. John?
What if we don't adopt the resolution, what happens? I always like to ask that kind of question. You know?
Yeah, Dave, you can back me here and Alex, but I think, I'm fairly certain that we're obliged to. But there is an action desired to have the council actually adopt the rates. But if we go back to the agreement, I believe they, they're allowed to raise the rates based on what their costs are.
Okay.
That it, John?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question has to do with food waste. So it appears on the index-based adjustments that there is a food waste processing cost that is collected. And then I looked through the commercial and multifamily, and it looks like they get it. So my question is, when will residents get that? And coming back to Louise, who oversees the Oaks, are they a multifamily and do they have access to the food waste program?
I'll speak to the food waste collection for residential. That is really around how the material is processed. So currently, the district doesn't process yard trimmings and commingled food scraps. This is something that we're exploring with the district and working with green waste with, as SB 1383 is coming down the pipeline here. So we are exploring that and figuring out what the cost basis around that will be looking like in the near future. But for now, that is not available to residential customers.
Can you please state that legislation that was going through, SB 3 something?
SB 1383.
1383, thank you. My sister lives up in the Bay Area, and they have green waste as their garbage purveyor as well, but they have the food waste. So is it simply based on the fact where the items go and we just don't have the capability?
Yes, it's correct. It's about the compost facility.
Okay. And, but we're anticipating something within the next two years? Is that correct?
Yeah, somewhere along that line.
Okay. And so, but we're charged for it. So does that mean commercial has access to it, or?
So only the commercial customers are charged for it if they enroll in that program, if they participate in that election operation.
So they have to opt in or opt out?
They have to opt into it.
Okay.
Until it becomes required. It's a phase-in by law.
Right, okay. That's the questions I have. So let's go out to the public. Dennis has had his hand raised. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. So the district, Dave has answered all those questions very nicely, yeah. The district knows that this SB 1383 is coming down, and that requirement's going to be laid on it. So they've been reaching out and experimenting with this, if you will, and asking restaurants and commercial entities to participate. This is a big challenge coming forward. We're going to have to figure it out, and I know that we will. With regard to our rates, we have to keep in perspective what's going on here. Number one, I think it's very important that everybody understand what has happened with COVID-19 and its impact on the district. The district is obviously a public entity, and we are looking at our fiscal year 2021 budget right now. And we're looking at declining revenues in the order of 15% to 20% because of COVID-19. The month of, month of, let's see, April. April is down 20% from the previous year in terms of revenues. We're looking at some really drastic measures in order to balance the budget for 2021. That may include as, well, the district is looking at options. The board will be looking at options. Finance committee is meeting tomorrow to discuss possible layoffs in order to make sure that we have a balanced budget for 2021. In terms of our tipping fee, the tipping fee is what it costs for a vehicle or a truck to come in and tip into the landfill. And we're looking at increasing tipping fees as a partial remedy for balancing the budget. Tipping fees have not increased for two or three years, I think, is what I recall. And those tipping fees have a direct or indirect impact on our residential rates. When we increase our tipping fees, the green waste recovery as a customer has to pay those tipping fees when they come across our scales. So those will eventually get passed on to us. Right now, we're honestly, we're looking at as much 5% increase in tipping fees this coming year. So, looking forward, we can anticipate that there will be some impact on our residential rates. But for right now, Dave Hilton and Dino described it very well. We've been very fortunate, and we're not looking at tipping fee increase, or a, excuse me, residential rate increase. So those are the things I wanted to convey, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Dennis. Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question for Dave. Our next agenda item relates to signage. And I was told by your general manager that the political signs, we're heading into a political season, that those plastic political signs cannot be recycled. And I'm just wondering, what do you do with the massive amounts of trash that's going to be coming into your facility?
I'm sorry, that's, I work as a consultant, helping Dino out and great review. I don't actually, I'm not working at the district in terms of processing that material, just to clarify.
Scott, I'll take that question to the Waste Management District. I don't know the answer either, but they're the ones that would.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Any last comments or questions of Dave or Dino? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution for the rate schedule, the new green waste recovery rate schedule for 2021.
I second.
All right. Kim, can you do a roll call vote, please? Louise, did you have a question?
No, I was going to second.
Okay. Sorry, Karen.
That's okay. Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lintel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Clark, uh, Mayor Kerr, sorry.
Yes. It happens unanimously. All right. Thank you all, and thank you, Dave, for being with us. So we're going to move on to item C, Consider First Reading of Ordinance 302, Modifying Chapter 17, Block 59 of the Delray Oaks Munich Code, Relating to Signs as Recommended by the Planning Commission. I'm going to turn this over to Dino.
Thank you, Mayor. The, as you all know, the Planning Commission took on revising the sign ordinance. Chair Donaldson, working with Alex and myself. And Chair Donaldson did the lion's share of the spade work, looked at the Monterey Code, which had been most recently updated, as well as some other surrounding codes, and took a swing at updating ours. We sat down with the city attorney and did a couple of reviews through that to revise ours, and then brought it to the Planning Commission. There was robust public input and commissioner input at that time. And the recommendation was to bring a first reading with certain changes to the council. That version from the Planning Commission was brought to the council at your last meeting. And, actually, I believe it was meeting before last. And there was, again, robust discussion by the council and from the public regarding certain aspects of it. The takeaway, the motion at the end of the discussion was to collapse certain definitions in the ordinance to simplify the matrix and to remove references to 45 days. As it related to temporary signs, there was a little bit of confusion around the motion after we looked at it. And so what we brought back to you tonight is two versions of the sign ordinance, an option A and an option B. Option A, both of them, option A and B, collapse the definitions. Option A leaves in the 45-day limit for temporary signs, but removes the language that would not allow a temporary sign to be reused. Option B, which is how we understood the motion originally to be, removes all references to 45 days throughout the ordinance, making a temporary sign usable as long as you like. And those are the basic differences between option A and option B. There is, I've had discussions with various council members, as well as Chair Donaldson, about this revision. And it is certainly the case that we could continue to refine this ordinance and make it better. There is no question. It is also true that this ordinance before you tonight, in either form, is a significant improvement over our existing code in terms of the freedom to use signs, in terms of clarity for residents to understand where and how they can use signs, and for your staff to understand what the standards are and how enforcement may be applied when needed. And so my recommendation, our staff recommendation to the council, is that you adopt option A only because sign clutter in our city is a concern for your staff. Frankly, option B is easier to enforce, but from an aesthetic perspective, option A is recommended. Having said that, we are, we, staff will get behind, obviously, the will of the council, which may include adopting one of the two tonight, modifying slightly one of the two tonight and passing it. Or if there is simply not agreement on any of this, we can go back to the drawing board. You may appoint a council or a subcommittee, and we can keep working on it. And with that, Alex, who's done a terrific amount of work on this, and I are available to answer any questions council or the public may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Alex, do you have any comments before we start the dialogue?
No, I think Dino summed it up pretty well. There was some confusion regarding the motion, and therefore, you know, you've got the two options before you, as was understood by the, by different council members.
Thank you. All right, Kristen?
Okay, you know, I'm supporting A. I think that this is better than what the original ordinance read. I know it's costing us a lot of money and city attorney time, no offense there, Alex, but I'd like to see maybe in the future, you know, we can continue to rehash this. But I think that it's important, especially with, you know, with the elections coming up, that we get a ordinance that works. And I think that we need to remember that it's the spirit of this ordinance that the city is going to enforce it, and that we basically, the city enforces these signs based on complaints generally. We don't have a city staff that's going to go around and work down how many days you have to sign up. It's just like same with the cars. There's cars that are parked on the street that have been there for much longer than 72 hours. You know, I go on a walk every day, and I see cars that have been sitting there for months. But generally, we work on a complaint basis. I would like to see one little teeny-tiny addition, and that is that the signs may not be used for more than 45 days in a calendar year. Because you could put it up for 45 days, take it down for a day, put it up for 45 days, and down. People can play a game, and I think that if you have it, you have to have some, something. I don't know, I'll ask that one question to Alex, you know, if that's possible, but in a calendar year. Or something, you know, if somebody wants to make it a little bit different. 45 days and a half calendar year, you know, whatever. I think that there needs to be some type of limit so that there's, somebody that's just playing a game with the city in case it needs to be enforced. So I'm supporting option A.
Okay. Thanks. Pat?
Yes, I also am supporting option A. I think it should be under temporary signs. It should be more definitive regarding removing the sign for a day and replacing it. This deletes the purpose of being a temporary sign if you do this. It can just perpetuate and go on and on and on. And so I like Kristen's suggestion of 45 days in a calendar year, but I would like it to also be consecutive days. I don't like the idea of having it up 10 days, taking it down, adding it, putting it up again for 20 days or something, you know. I think that the whole issue regarding temporary signs needs to be more definitive. And thank you.
All right, Louise?
I support option A. I am a little bit concerned. I don't like the thought, particularly, for example, this year, where we had a primary election in February, and because of the way, top two way that California votes, there's a run-up, so to speak, runoff in November. So limiting a temporary sign to 45 days in a calendar year kind of would inhibit, prevent somebody from using the same sign, supporting a candidate who has to now do a runoff six- six months or seven months later. So, to me, that's a little bit impractical. To say only once in a calendar year. Um, I would like to see it somehow limited, 45 days. You know, this election season is election season and everybody, um, somebody else, somebody brought up, you know, well, a, a different kind of temporary sign. Somebody with, with staying a, a, just saying, you know, brief friends or something like that, you know, just, just saying something like that. If, if you feel strongly about something, there's, that you want to have a sign there for a long period of time, there's nothing stopping you from making it a more permanent sign and going to this, to the planning commission and, and getting permission to put up a more permanent sign. Uh, something nice and out of wood and painted or whatever. But a temporary sign, you know, be it plastic, be it paper, be it whatever. We need to, to have some control over those, but I don't want to limit it to only once a year because as I said, we have elections and people run again. So I would like to see it a little bit, uh, not quite as, as restrictive as only once a year. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Um, I have a clarifying question, then I'd like to spill back out to the public and then, and then these comment, I kinda see what, what the, my, uh, um, my fellow council members have been saying is basically kind of making the comments on. So, um, so I'd like to actually leave my comments until after I've heard from public, from the public. Uh, but I do have one, I have a clarifying question. Define for me what, what option A is or does. I, I don't quite understand this, that change, you know, that, that, the, the small change that we made and we brought this back. Cause it's not the same, it's not the same ordinance that we deliberated the last time we were here. Is that correct? So what, I mean, give me, give me an empirical example of how a resident might use option A.
Okay, Alex, I'll take a, I'll take a swing at that. Um, so John, you're asking me how, uh, option A is different than what? Well, let me just tell you what I think option A is. Option A, uh, essentially restricts the use of temporary signs to a set period of time of consecutive days.
Right, right. In consecutive days.
And currently, the, the ordinance has that as 45, which is greater than, than the, than our current ordinance, which is 30. Um, uh, it does not specify, um, a, a reuse time. Uh, and so I think that's a concern you might, we are clearly hearing from, from some council members. Um, it, it simply says that 45 consecutive days is the limit for the use of a limit, of, of a temporary sign.
Okay, and a, and a temporary sign is, obviously it's a political sign, but then also, well, are the DRO road signs, are those defined? Do they fall in the category of temporary sign?
It would depend on their construction. If they are constructed, uh, as temporary signs are described in the ordinance, then yes.
Well, the ones that, the ones that were constructed, that, that were made, would, would those have fallen under the, uh, the current ordinance as a temporary sign? And then, the, uh, the signs that are made out of plastic that, that look similar to a political sign, but they have a, uh, a lifestyle or, or a thing that you find in your garden, people's gardens, that are not instructive, is that a temporary sign?
Again, y- yes. If they're, if they're constructed within the definition of, of a temporary signs materials, which it sounds like you're describing one that is, then it would be a temporary sign.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to go to the public and hear, hear from them.
Okay. Uh, my only question for now is, does it say consecutive 45 days?
It does.
It does, okay. Um, and I just want to apologize, I think my confusion, Pat, just a moment. I, I see you. Um, uh, my confusion was I wanted one statement deleted, not the entire 45 days. So I just want to, um, acknowledge my part in the complexity of this. Um, and there were just a couple of little nuances, like in 17 dot 59 dot 140, there's no page numbers. Um, uh, it, it says, um, sorry, hang on, bear with me, A, under A. 140, Campaign of Record. I think that should be more generic, like homeowner.
Which sentence are you, I'm looking at.
So in, in the bold section of, of item 1759140A.
Right.
Um, in the bold section about halfway down, it says, "When a temporary sign is confiscated by city staff from public property, staff shall notify the Campaign of Record." I mean, that's obviously having to do with political signs, but we also have other signs. So I was just wondering if that could be, um, shifted to something like homeowner. So the homeowner would be notified that the sign was taken.
I see a problem with that.
Okay. Um, and in A, it says not, uh, not retrieving the sign within 10 days. But then in C, it says, "Above shall be stored," sorry, "for a period of not less than 30 days." So there's inconsistency.
Sorry Mayor.
That's okay.
Give me those two again.
Item A, uh, the next sentence after the Campaign of Record reference, it says, "If the campaign has not retrieved the sign within 10 days of notice, this city may dispose of the signs."
Okay.
And then down in C, it says, "Any sign impounded under the provisions of subsection A or B shall, above shall be stored for a period of not less than 30 days, at which time it will be destroyed." I'm just wondering why there's a 20 day difference.
Mayor, I think those should be harmonized, those two numbers.
Okay.
Which do you prefer?
Um, well, I'm just saying, I don't know. Everybody's home right now, 10 is fine, but 30 makes it better.
Okay, so, so I'm just keeping track of edits, then I'm changing paragraph Cs 30 to 10.
Right. Um, the other thing is the ancillary square footage also does not, um, align. The first one is 17 dot 59 dot 170. It says one square feet, foot, excuse me. And then there's a different reference, 17 dot 59 dot 080, which references three square feet.
I believe one is the sign and one, and the other is the aggregate. Alex, check that for me.
I thought last time we talked that it would be three square feet total, rather than, uh, an individual sign.
Mayor, it's dot 170, what was the reference to the other, other section?
The one, one square foot is dot 170.
Mm-hmm.
Three square feet is dot 080. I thought we discussed that last time, that we were just gonna make a three, um, three square feet total.
So Alex, while you're reading this, my understanding of this as written is that 170 specifies that an anc, any given ancillary sign will not be larger than one by one square foot. And 080 restricts the aggregate of several ancillary signs to not more than an area of three square feet.
I, I think that's correct. The only thing I, I might change is that it, over three square feet is not prohibited, but it's not exempt anymore and therefore would have to go for, for approval.
Right.
But I could, again, I could have sworn, we discussed this last time, it, to make it a three square foot potential sign. And so therefore you would.
I mean, if that's what you'd like, we can do it. I mean.
Yeah, absolutely, that's within your discretion to decide. Absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then, non-permanent, I'll come back to this one after public comment. Alright, so let's go out to public comment. I see Ken has his hand up.
Thank you, I think you, you addressed most of my concerns. I, um, frankly would request that, uh, the matter be sent back in that a tighter, cleaner ordinance be presented. Uh, we shouldn't need to be in a rush to produce something that's subpar and I think, um, less than what we should expect in drafting an ordinance. An ordinance oftentimes takes more time than what has been spent on this and I certainly appreciate the effort by the Planning Commission and Scott and everyone else. But I do think that, uh, sending it back so that corrections can be made. Again, the residents are the ones that are looking at this ordinance to decide what they can and cannot do. The simple confusion on ancillary being a permitted or exempt sign is confusing to the ordinary resident. And I think, again, we're just asking for problems down the road. If we don't tighten it up and make it clear for residents what they can and can't put up with an easy looking at the ordinance and also what the enforcement and punishment provisions are gonna be. Um, so I think, again, with respect to specifics, there are many of them that can be changed. Um, and Mayor, you actually hit on a lot of the ones that were specific that I was going to be raising, but there are others that are included in the ordinance that are confusing. And I will just, again, urge you to send it back so that we can tighten this up, make it a better ordinance. And I would be supporting option B, um, and ask you to consider option B because I don't believe that, uh, limiting the signs to 45 days really allows someone to exercise their First Amendment rights, freedom of speech. Um, what if there is a war going on and I want a sign that says, "I support our troops"? Do I have to stop that support after 45 days? What do I do? And there was some suggestion that I have to go to the city planning commission to get a permanent sign. Is that really the kind of regulation and, um, that we want for the residents? I think we're reasonable, responsible adults. I don't see a lot of blight. I didn't see a lot of blight or problems with the signs during the last election. I think that our, uh, staff and law enforcement handled the last election well. There was one issue, I believe with one of the city council members, where there was an issue whether he believed he had a right to, for the sign up because it was in his opinion, uh, not constitutional. But otherwise, I felt everyone complied. And I think putting more and more regulations on us, uh, is not in the spirit of what I see Delray Oaks as being. Um, I may not like the color you paint your house or the plant you, uh, the flowers or trees you plant in your yard. That's aesthetics. Uh, but I think the right to express yourself. Love is love, I support our troops, no war, Black Lives Matter, blue, I support the police, whatever it is. And it shouldn't be limited to 45 days. Uh, it should be allowed, we should, we're adults. We should be allowed to do what we wanna do. So I support sending it back to clean it up for option B. Thank you.
Alright, Scott?
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanna speak on behalf of all the planning commissioners. This was definitely a challenge and we all worked really hard to update this ordinance. We're not sign experts, we work for free and we dedicated two meetings to it. And we incorporated the feedback we got from the public and I think we addressed those concerns. I mean, the, the reason I put it on the agenda in the first place is because of public concern, particularly with the election coming up. And matter of fact, Kim Shirley was the one that approached this, asking to have it on there. And I thought, absolutely, we can do that, realizing that the, the campaign season was coming up. So, in terms of timing, that was the one event that I think we were looking at as we were trying to update this to make sure that we didn't repeat some of the things that we had in the past. Um, we tried to get the majority of the concerns addressed and, and overall, if there is a perception that this ordinance is more restrictive overall, that's not what we tried to do. And I would say that's not true, that it is more restrictive. Uh, for example, on the political signs, one of the things that was expanded there was the amount of signage that you could have. It, it was increased tenfold from eight square feet to 80. I think we did a good job with, uh, addressing the, the enforcement piece of it, where we've got some clarification in there now. And it gives a range of options actually now to the city that didn't exist before, from administrative type action all the way to punitive. The setback issue was also something that was brought up and I think we're on, on the track, on the right track there to being able to verify that with actual survey data. And we use Monterey's updated, uh, ordinance as kind of a guide as we went through there. And I think, you know, using them as a test example, I think it's going fairly well for them from a legal and a public perspective. I haven't heard a lot of issues coming from them. So, those are just some of the things that, you know, I would like to share and, and hopefully you, you keep those things in mind as you continue to discuss it. Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Kim Shirley?
Thank you. I do wanna acknowledge that there has been a lot of work put into this. So thank you to the Planning Commission and to the last council meeting for this. And Commissioner Donaldson, yes, you did increase the square footage. There are some really great changes made. Um, unfortunately, when it comes to this sort of analysis, we look at everything now that it's on the board. And so the things that we were really interested in got fixed, fixed. But now we're seeing other things that are just confusing. And so I'd like to just point out, so in, um, .060 enforcement, it refers to the provisions of sections 8.28.050 through 8.28.200 as part of enforcement for the signs. So I had the, I had to look that up because that wasn't in the packet. So I went and looked that up and that seems like a very logical, like we'll give you notice and then we'll, you know, there's steps to it that increase. But it seems conflicting if we look at the abatement of signs for, uh, .40, 140. Um, certainly in section A, again, I'm, I'm looking, I've, I printed off of, um, option B because that's the one I prefer. So if we look at option B, it talks about subject to immediate confiscation. So it seems like there's no noticing that is going on and so that seems in, in conflict with what you state prior. And then also in section B, um, there's also a talk about, you know, well, also in A, talking about having to pay costs. And I'm wondering what those costs would be. Um, and then also it talks about in, in B, it says, "Any sign placed on or about private property which creates a health or safety hazard, including obstruction of vision in the public right of way, may be removed by the, uh, police chief or city manager or the respective delegate." So, um, again, it seems like they just have the option to remove it and there's no noticing. Um, so it seems like there's a lot of discretion that would be up to the city that, um, is, again, different than what you state originally and how you're gonna enforce the signs. So, um, that was something that was a little alarming to me. And I think that's all I'll say right now. Thanks.
Uh, Mary Solzang, did you have your hand up? Okay. Um, any other public comment? Scott, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much for just allowing me to add one comment. There is a lot of redundancy in, in this, in this revision. So all those things that you see and, and you've brought up a, a lot of those that conflict with, with other parts of the, the ordinance. Please continue to do that. And, and really, if it doesn't get updated before the, the election, the campaign season, then it doesn't. I mean, the, the only reason I think we're looking at is because people were concerned that, that. that we take a look at it prior to the election. And that was the motivation behind doing what we're doing right now. So thank you for allowing me the additional comment.
Thanks, Scott. All right, any other public comment? I don't see any hands. I'm going to close public comment and come back to the council. I just want to make a comment. I am happy I volunteered to be on a subcommittee to redo this, if that is the will of the council. I just wanted to put that out there. John?
Yes. I'd be on the subcommittee also, too, if we did decide to bring this back. But I would prefer to try to, I think we can finish this thing tonight. My issue is that, and so let me start with, I appreciate all the work that has been done. And I really appreciate the changes in the square footage required or allowed for the campaign. Now I will be able to put up the signs that I want to put up and be within compliance. And so I feel vindicated in that, in that the city looked at that, said that that's fine. You can go ahead and do that. And then is now proposing to put a, is proposing to put rules that I can follow and I can live within. So that I totally appreciate. But with regard to the types of the signs and then all the regulatory, the kind of all the regulation that's around it, I mean, we're getting, we're on a slippery slope. We are trying to regulate speech. We are trying to regulate something that has never been an issue in the 50-some-odd years that I've been a resident of Delray Oaks. And, you know, that we need to put any time limits on any signs is, again, it's just putting a regulation for an issue that we don't have yet. If we, if someone does, I think that it would be very localized and very concentrated. And I think we could address it that way. But to just blanket and say that Tim Shirley can't put a Delray Oaks no-road sign up, or I can't put, or Ken can't put a no-war or a Black Lives Matter sign up for more than 45 days, is, it flies in the face of the cornerstone of our democracy. I mean, free speech is the whole reason, it was the start of the whole reason of the birth of this country. And here we are, almost willingly discussing, tempering that. And I just can't. I just absolutely can't. So I will not be supporting Option A. I would definitely be supporting Option B. Or, and this is not my preferred, you know, sending it back to either a subcommittee or back to the Planning Commission. They've done a wonderful job. I think that they can take the simplest and take another swing at this. So with that, I'm not going to be supporting Option A, and I'll be supporting Option B.
Mayor?
Yes?
Might I address the council on this?
Please, please.
Either Mayor, so I think you all understand my role in this in helping drafting. The discretionary portion is taken from the Monterey ordinance as well as the Planning Commission. And I helped put that together in a format before you. In moving this forward, I also wanted to throw out an option that the council may choose to adopt either A or B tonight as presented. That way you could move to a second read at the regular council meeting at the end of this month and, in addition, appoint a subcommittee to further iron out some of the issues that have been discussed tonight. And I think maybe that idea sort of addresses both issues. That is, those that have a desire on the council to see something in place sooner rather than later with respect to the election season coming up will have something on the books. And then a subcommittee that's to be appointed, whether that be a couple council members as well as member of the public, whoever it might be, whatever is the pleasure of the council, could then work to iron out some of these issues and bring those back, I don't know, in July, perhaps, something along those lines.
Kristin?
I agree with you, Alex. That's a good suggestion. I'd like to see if you were going to do a subcommittee. I'd like to have, you know, maybe two people from the Planning Commission and two people from the council. And, you know, I am still concerned. I know there's, you know, free speech. What if it's somebody that has hate signs? I mean, you know, we have to be really careful. We're always thinking about, you know, these love signs. But what about somebody that puts up hate signs and stuff like that? We would have no recourse. So we have to be really careful about this sign ordinance. And, you know, if you get complaints, then, I mean, we have to have some way to remove signs that are unbecoming. If there are signs, if the signs that are up there become old and stained and people throw rotten eggs at them, and it looks real trashy. I mean, you have to think about all these other things, the bad things. We can't be thinking of only, you know, the love things. So we have to give City Hall the tools that they need to address these issues. You know, at the Oaks, they don't allow signs at all, you know? We can go down that route, too. But we need to be reasonable. And you also need to understand that City Hall has always been very lenient. Nobody has ever, at City Hall, I've never known, of all the years that I've lived here, 25 years, I've never seen City Hall go around town and look at people's signs and say, "You have to take them down." It's only been complaint-driven. And so I think everybody needs to understand that. Like I said at the very beginning, it's the same with the cars. Usually, it's always complaint-driven. That our city staff, it's the nice part of living in a small city, that everybody knows your name, you know? And I think that if people willingly put signs up in a place that they're not supposed to, I have no problem with city staff picking it up and taking it away because we have clear, you know, guidelines that says that they need to be in a certain part of your yard. So I think if we keep, try and keep to the basics, and we're not trying to split hairs here. But again, I still think that city staff needs something to work with now. And I'm in favor of approving Option A until we can come up with more definitions in here that you want to massage.
So you, that's a motion?
Hold on. I'd like to respond to that.
Okay, hang on, just a second. I'm going in order, John, so hang on. Pat?
Yes, regarding the enforcement, I think it's imperative that our police are able to remove a sign that is a hazard to pedestrians or automobiles and so on. So I think City Hall does need the option of removal in a case like that. Also, a lot of this conversation is really evolving around political signs. Maybe if we had a separate temporary sign for political signs, that would solve some of the problems. Just a thought. I'm still approving Option A. And I'm thanking Scott and the entire Planning Commission for all the hard work that they have done. They've done a great job. And I know it was very difficult, but I do thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Pat. Alex, can you answer that inquiry in regards to having something separate for political signs?
I can, Mayor. Unfortunately, that's not an option because doing, enacting a regulation regarding a political sign is a content-based regulation and therefore impermissible. So therefore, the distinction now being more of temporary versus permanent. Unfortunately, after Town of Reed versus Gilbert, or Gilbert versus Town of Reed, that's not permissible.
Thank you.
John? Oh, I'm sorry. Louise, I'm sorry, John.
Right now, I think Option A is a good start. And I think it's time to start and have something in effect. Going back to some of the concerns that were mentioned, the one about the campaign signs, that paragraph specifically talks about signs in public right-of-way. And the other one talks about signs that are private property but are a hazard. So, and those really, especially the one that are potential hazards as in blocking views from stop signs and intersections and things. Those definitely need to have the authority to be removed immediately. You know, you take, somebody, you know, without, not intentionally, but puts up a sign on their property, but it ends up blocking somebody, and they're gone for the day to work. And the police notice that it's blocking the view for the cars. Do we wait till they come home from work and in the meantime, an accident happens? We don't want to do that. So I think the police need those tools now. And we need to tweak this further. But I think this is a good, Option A is a good start.
Thanks, Louise. John?
Yeah, so all the hazard concerns are already addressed. This is not what we're talking about. And then with regard to the Oaks, I mean, that's a private residence in HOA. And so you, when you agree to live there, you've agreed to live under those rules. And they have, because it is a private residence and because everyone owns open space in common, they're allowed to, they're allowed to restrict signage and all kinds of things like that. That's a separate, indifferent situation that we're in right here. I am talking about a private homeowner, a landowner, who has an opinion, and they are well within their right. The Constitution gives them the right to basically to say what they want to say. And it is unique that Congress, or not Congress, Supreme Court actually recognizes how special it is. The message coming from someone from their residence is seen as a special way of messaging. It's a special type of speech. This is why it's that much more protected. And there are, I know that there are state Supreme Court rulings that are overlying, but they cannot actually supersede the Supreme Court, which is the Lorca ruling in '94, which basically it was, it was Tim Rutherford's example of a no-war, you know, get out of Iraq sign that someone put up in their property, and they were told to bring it down. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and they were ruled in their favor. And that is now the law of the land. That the Constitution is the law of the land. The point that Councilmember Clark came up with, what if there's hate speech? Or what if there's something that's becoming? That is, that is the country that we live in. And then, you know, it's unbecoming to whom? That's the kind of the question, is that I might say Black Lives Matter, but there might be somebody that lives right across the street from me that absolutely is offended by that. But that's the country that we live in. I'm allowed to say that because that is sacrosanct to me. And then, and if that, if the construction of that is made out of cloth or it's made with some sort of temporary wire or something like that that I purchased, somebody could come along and say, "That's a temporary sign. You only had it for 45 days. Take that out." And that is, that is a direct regulation on my free speech. And I just cannot live with that. There was another one in here, oh, there were a lot of ifs. You know, I don't mean to pick on Councilmember Clark, but there were a lot of ifs that she was saying, "If this, if this, if this." We, if we have had any of those, if there had been a history in the 50 years that I've been here where we've seen this as a problem, I would tend to agree. But we're not, that not one of the examples that she gave has ever been raised. And also to the argument that, well, because it's only complaint-driven, it means that you can actually kind of push the rules, that to me doesn't solve the, solve the, or meet the bill of a good ordinance either. You know, we have something on the books that you vote to follow, but you don't really look at it. And no one's going to, it's only, if someone complains about it, then you're, you know, you have to comply. But otherwise, you just let it slide. I don't think that that's, that's, that's not a good ordinance either. So again, I mean, I just implore my councilmembers to rethink this. I mean, this is a slippery slope. I watched two, I watched two planning commissioners kind of twist themselves into pretzels where they were from different stripes. And one was basically trying to think of, they both understood that there was a free speech argument here, but they're both trying to figure out, how do I craft an ordinance that prevents the kind of speech that I don't want and allows the kind of speech that I do want? That's not ours. We're not allowed to do that because we live in this country. And we really, we can't regulate it. This is not ours. This all could be challenged. Monterey's ordinance, the reason that it hasn't been challenged, doesn't mean that it's a good ordinance. I mean, and so I feel the same way here. I'm not going to challenge this. And if we vote for Option A, then that will be, that will be our law of the land. But I don't agree with it. And if somebody really, really wants it, they could absolutely challenge it because it will go all, it could go all the way to the Supreme Court, and then they would win. So we have, we have actually a very good ordinance. And it's called the United States Constitution. Whenever it comes to free speech, I think we should probably just stay with that. All right, those are my comments.
Thanks.
If you want to bring a motion, then I'd like to, I will make a motion.
You know what, John? John, hang on. Kristin's hand was up. Hang on just a second. Thank you. Kristin?
I just wanted to know what Alex thought about that.
Again, the...
It's not the Lorca, it's not, it's not the Lorca, it's the Ladue, Ladue case. I call it the Lorca case, but that's just because of...
The, the, yes, Councilmember Gagliotti is right. It is sacrosanct. It's one of the most protected forms of speech. However, constitutional law does allow sort of time, place, and manner regulations on those things. For example, a maximum square foot area on the signs. That's something that's allowed as long as the speaker is able to communicate their message. So while, while the Constitution, both federally and state, protect speech, especially political speech, especially in your home, it does allow some broad sort of time, place, and manner regulations.
I will say Ladue did not. Ladue, that's all been kind of bolted on past Ladue. Ladue was more binary.
Thanks, Alex. Any questions, comments? Motions?
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution with the, with the changes that were, the new changes that were brought in, but we adopt Option B as, with regard to this specific ordinance, or the specific, yeah, the specific ordinance within the overall ordinance.
Mayor, could I speak to that briefly?
Yes.
And that's just for the council's consideration, a procedural matter. And that is, if some of the changes that were noted here are part of the motion, this needs to come back for another first read as it's changed after its introduction. An alternative might be to adopt as presented. And then if it was the pleasure of the council to work with a subcommittee, implement some of those changes that were discussed going forward.
So as the maker of the motion, I'd like to open maybe some more discussion and kind of get what the pleasure of the council is, which direction they want to go.
Kristin, Pat, Louise?
I like Alex's idea of going ahead with it and then a subcommittee to further develop and refine it. I think that's a good idea.
Pat, would you like Option A or Option B in that?
Option A.
Kristin, any?
Mayor, give the chair, or as kind of a pointer, we, I don't think we can take a poll on which way we would vote, on whether it's Option A or Option B. But I think that we could address the question, as, I mean, the motion could say we adopt one of these and then go on to a subcommittee and break it out. But I don't think it's appropriate to be asking which council member, each council member, how they're going to vote.
Alex?
Yeah, I think what the mayor was inquiring is just, John, I think you had said, or pardon me, Councilmember Gagliotti, you had kicked it back to the council for further discussion on one of the points. I think Councilmember Lintel was just an expression of opinion, but I don't think it was a formal polling by the mayor, as I understood it.
Right. Right.
Kristin, Louise?
So do you want, do you want a motion now? Are you?
It's up to you.
I'll make a motion that we accept A currently, but that the ordinance goes back to a subcommittee to be reviewed and revised and brought back to the city council.
I second.
Okay, Karen, can you do a roll call?
Can we have, can we have some discussion on the, on the, on the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to know, if we go back to the subcommittee, is that an opportunity to address this particular ordinance tonight? So if the council, the council chooses option A, it's going to go back to the subcommittee, does the subcommittee have the wherewithal to completely change?
Sure.
That would be at the, that would be at the pleasure of the council, whether or not they wanted to authorize the, the subcommittee to expand and to look forward more into the temporary issue as well as some of the other comments made by the public.
Does it have to be added to the, to the motion?
I'm sorry?
Does that have to be added to the motion?
It would be helpful to be added as well, the two things, to adopt A and then establish the subcommittee and then address the scope of the subcommittee.
And, okay, and address the scope. So the subcommittee could, well, as the maker of the motion, go ahead, Kristin, maybe, maybe you've done a massage.
Yes, what, what, yes, that we accept A, we have a subcommittee to massage this. And what do you say about the scope, the whole, the whole scope? Yeah, to massage the whole thing.
The subcommittee would, yes, address.
And bring it back to the council.
And would the, and, and address the whole thing. But could the subcommittee have the wherewithal to, to change, change the council's pleasure from A to B, or an ordinance that's more in line with B? Would it have?
Well, well, I mean, if the subcommittee brings it back, it's the council's pleasure whether or not to accept what the subcommittee recommends.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mayor? Oh, I apologize for interrupting.
Alex, please.
Through the mayor, it would also be helpful if the maker of the motion suggested the composition of the subcommittee.
Yes.
Oh, the composite, yes. And I think I stated that earlier, that it should be two council members and two planning commission members.
I would like to do a friendly amendment. I would like to also see two residents involved.
I like that.
Kristin, we lost you. Or I did.
She froze.
Yeah. Shoot.
Unused.
She's back. Kristin, you're back.
You picked the residents.
We do an application, quick application? Alex?
Mayor, I might suggest via application or whatever it is, but the two members of the subcommittee that are council members could be tasked with, with agreeing upon two planning commissioners and two residents.
Okay. I'd like to be one of the members. It's, it looks like there's going to be two sides of this of the, of the council. So I'd like to be on one side of the council and then of the other four, you guys pick someone.
So Alex, Alex, do we elect the subcommittee in this same motion or a second motion?
I think it could be, you know, maybe you vote on, on which option you want and then you move forward with creation of the subcommittee.
Okay. So Kristin, so you have a motion to adopt A, to establish a subcommittee to address the scope of option A. And that subcommittee will consist of two council people, two planning commissioners, and two public.
Residents. Residents.
The scope of the subcommittee is not to just talk about option, or the scope of option A, it's the scope of the entire ordinance.
The whole, the entire ordinance.
That's how I understood it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Council member Getzelt?
Yes.
Council member Lindell?
Yes.
Council member Gagliotti?
No.
Vice mayor?
Sorry.
I did.
Okay.
Vice mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. All right, it passes. Shall we have a motion for who on the council should be part of the committee?
I'll make a motion that council member Gagliotti and mayor Kerr be part of the committee.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Okay. Karen, can you do a roll call?
I think Alex has a comment.
Here, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alex. I was looking on the wrong screen.
Not at all. And also just to clarify that the motion that the two subcommittee members will be selecting the two planning commissioners and jointly selecting a, a resident to come back with suggested changes to the, to the ordinance as it's first adopted tonight and likely to be fully adopted at the end of this month.
What he said.
Okay. Was there a second?
I second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen, could you take us home, please?
Okay, council member Lindell?
Yes.
Council member Gagliotti?
Yes.
Council member Getzelt?
Yes.
Vice mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. Okay, so passes unanimously. Whew. All right.
Mayor, if I may?
You know, was that a, yes?
Okay, I just want to review the bidding before we all sign off for the night.
Yeah.
On both motions. My understanding of the first motion was that council voted to approve option A on the first reading and establish a subcommittee to review the entirety of the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
And that that subcommittee would consist of two council members and that those two council members would select two planning commissioners and one member of the public? Two members of the public.
Two.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. That motion passed 4-1. The second motion, which passed unanimously, was that the two council members would be mayor Kerr and council member Gagliotti. Thank you for your work.
And they, and they would select each?
Yes.
One of?
And the residents.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. So someone can get us this document in a soft copy?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Pat?
After the public comment on things not on the agenda, the city council members were not given the opportunity to comment on anything not on the agenda. And I would like to make a comment.
Um, okay, go ahead. This isn't, this is a special meeting, so that wasn't built in to do our reports, but please.
This is not a report. It's just to make a comment that is not on the agenda. And I would like to thank Scott and the planning commission for the wonderful work they did on this, and I know it was hard. I'd also like to thank our police chief, Jeff Coyne, for the beautiful letter that he wrote. I'm so happy we have him as the leader of our police department and his compassion and his good guidance. We're very fortunate. And thanks, Jeff. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So on that, the next meeting date is our regular council meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM. And on that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody, and please stay safe and wear your masks.